Okay, welcome on Tim Skagans Chair of the Shasbury Select Board and I'm calling this meeting to order. At 6:30 on Monday, July, January 4th, 2021. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
No. No, nor do I. Okay. There were minutes that got circulated about an hour ago. Did you all have time to look at those?
Tim, I think we always say that there's a change in the agenda.
Yes, thank you. I, you can see how my short-term memory works. Yes. A couple of things we want to, under other business, which can be anything anyway, we want to add BCR appointments and then we want to add an executive session at the very end of the meeting to discuss personnel matter. There will not be any business conducted after we return from executive session. Thank you.
Oops.
Minutes?
Oh, they've already started.
I have not had a chance to read them.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get those out until just a little bit ago. Let's go on to warrants. First up, I have payroll warrant number 13. The total amount is $24,328.19. Is there a motion to approve?
Move both.
Move by Ken. Second by Art. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving payroll warrant number 13, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Payroll warrant number 13, $24,328.19 is approved for 00. I have check warrant number two. And the amount of $12,608.84. This is a retirement warrant.
So move.
Oshin approved. Art, second by Ken. Any discussion on retirement warrant? All in favor of payroll warrant or retirement warrant number two, check warrant number two, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant number two, $12,608.84 is approved for 00. Next, I have check warrant number 23. Total amount is $170,005.14.
So move.
Move by Art.
Second.
Second by Ken. So major items on this one include 2,300 to Apache Salt. To 3,000 to Cat TV for our meeting recordings for a year. 24,000 to Records Force.
That was to digitize the, the Clark's records and that 24,000 is covered by a grant that we've already received.
Very good. 2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping. 1,500 to Wallingford Crush Domes. 131,300 to Weaver Excavating.
That's the, we bought the culvert that's going into the hollow this summer. We bought it early so that we missed the price hike. And that 131,000 is covered by the 175,000 grant from the state.
Okay. We're finally gonna do that, I guess.
Sitting in the parking lot now, so we get better put it in.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion on check warrant 23? All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant 23, $170,005.14 is approved for 00. And I believe that is it for the warrants. Does anyone have any announcements? I will announce that there are expiring terms on the planning commission, the DRB and the select board. Anyone wishing to serve in any of those roles. If you wish to serve on the planning commission or the DRB, let us know. Send an email or a call me or town administrator Dave Kiernan and let us know your intent and your desire to serve. If you want to serve on the select board, that is an elective office. This year, all that is required is that you file a letter of intent with the town clerk. This year because of COVID, we are not required, it is not required by the state to collect a petition as would normally be the case. Also, we want to announce that town meeting this year will be by Australian ballot. That is for this year's only. This is an emergency measure. Again, because of COVID, the budget and the date that taxes are due will be set on by Australian ballot. There will be an emotional, a virtual meeting, informational meeting by teleconference the Monday before what would normally be town meeting, but there will be no actual voting at that meeting. Public comments? I don't see any public who have dialed in. We'll go on to the Treasury's, Treasurer's report. Melanie Dexter.
Hi, everybody. I did get my reports in. If you have those, we could look at the cash flow first.
Yep, I am bringing that up.
Okay. I think at the, one of the last meetings, I promised you a comparison of delinquent taxes this year versus last year at the same time. So I've added that to the cash flow report. You'll see that at the bottom.
Sorry, I have to interrupt Dave. I have to have a have to make me co-host again since I logged out a while ago.
Oh, okay.
Well, when we get it, you'll see that I've added that as just a, that'll be a feature of the cash flow going forward. So I'll update that every time you see this report. Just because we, as I've said many times, we want to keep a close eye on that this year.
Tim, I don't see that you're recording. Did you intend to?
I did. Thank you. Sorry about that. I am, I think I have to stop. Oh, no, let's see.
Okay, should I keep going or should I wait?
Give me one second. I'm all flustered now.
Yep.
Thank you, Art.
Because you got it by my screen.
Yeah, I just got it. Had to leave the sharing to get the recording turned on. Okay.
Okay. Uh, so let's see, this is just a review of December. I didn't do for January yet. Obviously, it's too, too early, but so you see there's a pretty significant amount of delinquent taxes we got. Again, they're, they're coming in pretty, pretty swiftly. That government grant, I think, is something that Dave already mentioned. Let's see. So let's go down, let's go down to the bottom. You'll see, if you look at the checks, sorry, at the checks written in December, you'll see that's $4.5 million. That's the, the big tax transfers to the schools. So that means that our cash position now is, is much more realistic. Down there, yep. And the other thing is that I have not yet done the transfers to reserves. So that is a slightly elevated cash position, but you'll see that in the next report. I'm going to do those transfers later this week. So down at the bottom there, before the budget status, you see what I was talking about before, delinquent taxes as of today and versus where they were a year ago. Pretty close. And, and that's not exactly apples to apples because, you know, obviously Mert's not doing the collections on the same day. So that's not exactly the same, but it's, it's pretty close and I'll keep a close look on that. I said to Dave earlier today that, that we might see them diverge if Mert has already collected all the low-hanging fruit and, and and it doesn't follow a normal collection pattern. We just don't know whether that's the case, but as of right now, it, it's looks like we shouldn't, we don't need to be as alarmed as I was in my, my pessimistic way. I was, I was a little worried about it before, but it looks like maybe that was misplaced. Famous last words. So I'll keep an eye on that. But I don't think we're going to have you know, the, the trouble later in the year that, that some of us were predicting because of the pandemic. If you want to look at the, the budget status at the very bottom, you can see that our expenditures are slightly behind where they were last year as expected because of Dave's, you know, belt tightening. Revenues are, are, you know, that, that just means it's, that's the, the revenues seem to be overstated because that's predicting that all the delinquent taxes will be collected. So, you know, take that with a grain of salt. But we are doing pretty well in, in all, all regards that matter. Do you have any questions about any of that? Okay, so we can look at the, at the reserves if you want to look at that spreadsheet. And this is not, not going to be terribly useful to look at because as I say, I haven't done the transfers yet. So this is the last time you're going to see all those negative numbers in the ending balance column. A lot of those are just looking negative because I haven't done the transfers yet. Down at the very bottom is the restoration fund. That's the, that's the, the money that you were just talking about in the warrant that we got that, that see that 25,000. That is the grant that, that Dave was talking about, right, Dave?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. Yep. So that's, that's gonna go down close to zero once we pay the, pay the bill that you just, you just approved in the warrant. Um, the only other activity you see in in reserve accounts this year, I mean, this month, sorry, was, was the, was water payments because we had waters, water was due in early December. So that's it for reserves. Anybody have any questions about any of that? The, the only other thing I wanted to talk about was there was some kind of a state program for helping out people with their with their water utility payments if, because of the pandemic. And we had, I think it was six people took advantage of that program and I I was able to go in and approve them. And as far as I know, they, they actually got their money from the states or will get the money from the state. So that was a program I, I, I don't know. Did you find it, Dave, or was this, was this known everywhere?
I received an email from somebody in the state about it. So we just signed up for it. So our, every town had to sign up so their residents would be eligible or every system had to. So we just signed up for it. They really did all the notifications.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, we had six, six takers on that and that was something I did last week.
I imagine the money is sent directly to you and that doesn't go to them and then, then they send it to us.
Right, right. That wouldn't make a lot of sense. So I haven't seen any actual payments come in yet, but I'm waiting for that with bated breath. It was just last week. So I, I think that there's, you know, a several step process and the, the, I did get word that it was approved, but I haven't seen the next step. Any questions, buddy thing?
Yeah, Melanie, when do we have, when it goes to printing, we've got to set the date on when taxes are due. What?
Oh, yeah.
You said it was our decision, but I kind of want to get your input before, before we actually do vote on it and goes to, goes to printing.
You know, it depends on when you ask me. Some, some days I, I feel like I'm, I've just had enough of fighting with people and let's, let's just make it the same day as North Bennington and Bennington. And, and I think that's, you could certainly make that case. I could make that case. Any of you could make that case. Or else having it stay Friday, which has been for quite a while, that also makes sense to me. I, I really am completely agnostic on it.
Okay.
Um. Sorry, I'm not helpful.
That's okay. I assume, I assume the very last day that we could do it is 11/11. Is that, is that set by the state or something like that? It is?
I don't know that. No, I think so. I mean, if you get, if you get too late, then well, one of the problems is we're going to be running into water payments, which is, you know, I hate giving people the double whammy at the end of the year already. You can't make it too early because the revisions to tax bills cause so many problems for people. And, you know, you want to give people a chance to get their paperwork in. So so, yeah, I don't, I don't, we, we don't want to move to October or something, but I think that, that certainly within that first half of November, we could choose any day we wanted.
Okay, thank you.
Any new thoughts among you guys about that?
My, my vote is for, for the 10th.
I've, I've come, I've come to align with the 10th also. Same as North Bennington and Bennington.
Is that going to cause a problem with people that's got escrow accounts with banks?
No, it doesn't. They, they, all of the banks contact me and they get me the money the last possible second. And so, but so, yeah, that's, that's, it'll be completely normal to change the day. The one thing I need to do is to, is to check with my counterparts in Bennington and North Bennington to make sure they haven't put, pulled a switcheroo on us. So I will make sure before we absolutely finalize this that I get confirmation from them.
All right, Melanie, I'm giving you an action item then.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good thought. That would be make us look pretty silly if we changed it to the 10th and they all had changed it to the 6th.
Yep. Okay, so I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
All right, good.
Anything else?
All right, thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, guys.
All right, item eight is road report.
Well, not much going on with the roads except plowing, salting, sanding. Basically what the crew's been up to since before the holidays, when it's come up. We were pretty slow last week because we needed to separate the crew for a bit. We'll be doing some minor things, keeping the trucks running, but there's no project, nothing other than keeping the roads clear from snow and ice.
All right. Any questions, comments there? Okay. Item nine is E99, E911 address changes. As per request from the state. Dave, I'll let you take the bulk of this. I'll just say that we have, this comes up from time to time. The state will inform us that the, the camps up on the mountain don't have E91 addresses and we have chosen not to deal with that. But they have raised the, the issue of liability relative to that. And there are also some other issues. Dave, go ahead. I don't, I shouldn't.
Okay. We did get notified a couple of years ago about E1, E911 addresses in all the camps in town. It started with an inquiry from one of the emergency service agencies. We looked at it at the time and the board didn't want Shelley and I to go ahead with trying to do that. This is quite a task. We do need to move forward on it now. So what I'm proposing to the state is, and what we discussed with Shelley is we can actually do distances with a mapping program as best we can up these trails because they want the measurement from the side road, say Shasbury Hollow to where the driveway would be. Well, there's like no driveways on these camps. Most of this is a little trail going up into the woods. So we're going to work the best we can with it and look for a grant because we might have to hire someone to go out and tag all these places because you don't even, you have them up off the end of Shasbury Hollows and outcrops off that, as you know. But there's others in town and then where do we go if they want us to move towards Glastonbury? Because there's lots over there. So we're going to try and come up with a plan that makes the state happy without and being a little rational about it. Because like I said, they're all based on how many feet from a crossroad to a driveway. I mean, the camps are what trail? Maybe he went up this trail today. Maybe he went over there. Where's, where's the building? I know one guy up there had it on wheels. So, you know, he could move his camp from one place to another day by day. So I have seen, when Shelley and I first looked at this a couple of years ago, I had seen that some towns had mapped their camps and many towns had not mapped their camps. But state has just sent us another letter about a number of things they would like changed and we're going to have to take some action to try and remedy it. I'm not sure, this isn't going to be easy and it's certainly not going to be done before the end of the year. Especially if we have to go hiking around the hillside looking for camps and
I, I thought that was one of the biggest issues was that the accessibility to, to get into the camps as far as rescue vehicles, anything like that. You know, year-round, it, it's not a possibility, is it?
Oh, you can always get in. I mean, you know, if somebody needs to be rescued, that's kind of one of the things people don't, if somebody needs to be rescued, there's always equipment to get to them. But, yeah, some of these places on a sunny summer day are going to be difficult to get to. And then you're talking about, you know, you know, 10, 20 acre parcel or much bigger for some of them. Okay, so we mark out, you know, 1759 Road to Nowhere and they can find that. And okay, now find them on the 10 acres. Because the easiest way is coordinate a cell phone. Or I would like to address, go to the center lot, center point of the lot along the trail and just mark that with GPS coordinates and say, this is where it is. Once you get there, you still have to find the person somewhere on the property. So there's a lot of, you can go back and forth. I mean, Joe tells us from the fire department that, you know, a lot of the guys know what camp is what and who's where and, and that's undoubtedly true.
The benefit of a small town.
Yeah, a lot of people know who's where up there, but I can see on the other hand, if, if, say the state police get a call and they said, you know, we're up in Uncle Joe's camp. Okay, well, that might be a little bit hard to find. So we'll work out the best we can with them and see if there's see what we can do to, to get it done as quickly and unintrusively as we can. Because I'm not sure everybody even wants their camps marked, but, which is the other thing. Get someone to put a sign up and keep it there saying 1747, you know, Trail to Nowhere.
So how, how do we know how many camps there are because of tax rolls? Is that how, how we know they're there to begin with?
Well, the only thing you can do is identify each lot. And if you have a camp, if you have any kind of structure, there'd be a permit for it. But you'd really just be addressing on some of them. A lot of them, you'd just be, would be putting an address to a, to a lot. So pick the center point along the, the frontage and call it what it is. We do have some vacant lots that have 911 dresses. Just so if someone's working here, you can say, I'm at this and this, you know, whatever, Bacon Hollow Road, so that they can be found, but
But, but not all lots are convenient 10 acre lot either. I bet you some of them are 100 acre lots.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And so where are you? I went up to my camp, but I hiked to the back 20 acres. And your cell phone, who knows if we can even get it up there. So it has its problems.
Yeah, my, my suggestion, when Dave and I was, were talking about this was to try to get a planning grant and see if there's if we can turn this job over to somebody because when we, when we decide not to pursue it before, we were looking at taking a lot of Dave and Shelley's time and possibly having them having to walk up trails to identify where these things are and given that the state has been hounding us now for six or eight years to get this done. I think that would be one way to approach it is to see if we can get a planning grant and get, and turn this job over to somebody rather than have Dave and Shelley hiking up these trails or figuring out a system. We, one thing that we did notice is that the, we can come up with our own system like Dave was saying. We don't have, it doesn't make sense to put just an address necessarily on Shasbury Hollow Road for, you know, the various lots going up the side of the mountain, but we may be able to come up with some kind of system or maybe somebody can come up with some kind of a system with GPS coordinates that would make more sense, that would give, you know, a state trooper some idea of, of where somebody is. The, the, you know, it's of, I, in my opinion, it's of limited practical value, but it is something the state is hounding us to get done. And if we can get it done with a grant, I'd say go ahead and do it.
Yeah, and from the experience, I agree with Tim. Because from the experience that I know of around here with band members who are in this, I mean, they've gone up into the mountains to find someone who went off trail and was injured or something and, you know, they can be found. There's no addresses up on the mountains and people are still found and, and rescued. So it's, this is an exercise whose value I kind of question, but the state isn't going to let us forget it. So I think we just have to do it.
I noticed in a magazine that I was reading where they gave the 911 address for, for a place and then underneath it, they had the latitude and longitude for it. I thought that was kind of interesting. You almost could use that for those places since there is no post-site to road saying this is where the 911 address is, so.
Yeah, and we can even do that right off the computer. You can draw a line from the edge and just put coordinates.
Yes, exactly.
I'd rather have the coordinates, but I could follow those.
That, that's right. That, that, that's something that's, that's never going to change.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying? If somebody's driveway or, or trail might change all the time, but, but your coordinates is, are there forever.
Yeah.
And I, I think a sophisticated GPS thing will, will find those coordinates is one thing.
Yeah, yep. I agree. Well, we'll see what we can do to make it palatable to the state and if something will, will take up, I'll talk to Shelley about it. We'll start putting out feelers to see who has available for what. But there's a second hint to this too. We have several streets that we're going to have to change names and change everybody's address on. Furnace Brook for one was designed and approved and basically a cross. So it comes in, goes this way, goes that way and goes straight down. So you have four different sections of it and the state wants one of them renamed. So that you have Furnace Brook coming down and a new name for the street going across it. So that's going to change about 10, 15 people's addresses. And I think we're not going to have an option and I, I expect a bit of pushback on that. We have another house that was assigned, the driveway is on one street, but they use an address on the street their house faces, which is fairly common, but the state's insisting that that one be changed to the side road. We've contacted them a couple of times. They haven't responded to us, but we're getting to the point where we're just going to have to send them a letter that you are now changing the 911 system to this address. We have another street that's off of East Road that was a development that they all use East Road addresses, have been since way before I got here, but the state wants the entire thing renamed and renumbered. Which is a hard one to fight. Couple of years ago, Tim, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, they wanted us to redo Perrin Acres because some of the numbering was wrong. You said, you know, you're actually going to change all these houses because someone's videotape stuck and didn't get the proper distance between these driveways. Anybody responding there will know, you know, 547 comes after 545, you know, it's not that huge a difference, but that one we didn't want to do and they let that go, but these three and probably a few more will crop up that I think we're going to have to just let them know that we have to do it and it's really coming down from the state and we're just going to have to do. And we're just gonna have to do.
Gets to pick the name of the new road.
For, for peace, we'll, we'll have a survey of the.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, but uh, there are at least. Two streets and, and one house that uh, I don't see a way out of it. We're gonna have to assign them the numbers.
This, this may mean an actual personal. Uh. People may not respond to this in the mail or email. We may have to go out and knock on doors.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we tried. For the house, we've done. Two certified letters and a couple of phone calls and they just don't respond to us. And we, you know, it, it does matter when you change people's nine-one-one address. It matters on a lot of different things. So that's why it's um. It's touching with people. I understand, I understand that. Uh, they got, you know, within the case of Furnace Brook where it's across, that was. You can't do that, you know, under the system, so that does need to be changed.
Okay, well. I hate to do it during COVID, but. I hate to go making house calls during COVID, but we may have to. How much? I mean, how much time are they giving us? A year or, or what?
Oh, we have time and I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't move into trying to do this until. Things are better and we can go out and talk to people.
Okay, yeah, good.
What we can do is start looking around for a grant to uh, to help with this. Uh, and since we did uh. Make a motion before not to pursue it, I think it would be useful at this point to have a motion uh. Instructing Dave to seek a, a, a grant to uh. Help bring the town into compliance with E nine-one-one.
So move.
Move by Art, second by Ken. A discussion on the idea of seeking a grant to bring the town's. Uh. Addresses into compliance with E nine-one-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, that motion is agreed to. Four zero zero. All right, that takes us to item ten, budget. Uh, Dave, I don't believe anything has changed in the budget since we last talked about it.
No, I've uh, I keep updating what's online and what's on, on the public portal to the meeting. Uh, in the Dropbox. Uh, at this point, it's really just information so that the public can ask questions as. Art's motion back in December that we would discuss this at every meeting. Uh, nothing has changed from the last one. Uh, there'll be a few updates. We closed December this month, so my column that shows year-to-date for this fiscal year will be updated for the next week, but. At this juncture, I don't see anything changing at all. So uh, the information is there. I encourage the public to look at it and ask questions for the next meeting. Next two meetings, we can do it through February too. We won't be able to change it because it will be printed, but we can still keep discussing it. But it is there on the town webpage when you go to the meeting. For the agenda, there's a link right underneath it. It takes you to about, I think there's six documents in there, including the whole budget. That you can look at and uh, ask questions. If you're hanging into a meeting, call me and we can talk about it.
Remind us the uh. The very small percentage increase in the budget this year.
I believe it was just a little bit over one percent. Hold on here. Oops. Let's see. Well, that figures, I didn't, I didn't calculate it on this page. But it's going up in total of twenty-five thousand for the entire year, so. Basically, for every hundred thousand evaluation, it's gonna go up uh. Eleven dollars and forty cents. If you hold on here one minute, I'll tell you the percentage.
Well, forty thousand dollars is a penny, so it's less than a penny.
Yeah. Oh, and that amount, yeah, it's gone up uh, from point four, 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 nine to point four, five, six, three. Which is really nothing. Uh, let's see. It's gone, gone up one point one percent.
Okay, good.
Uh, Dave, how was um. Uh, community appropriations left? Um, the last I knew, we were gonna ask the radio station to come in. And talk to us. Was there anybody else we were gonna ask to come in?
No, uh, all the uh, community appropriations are past ones, stayed the same. Um, everyone, which was very good because this is a tough year for things to go up. Uh, we did approve the one new appropriation. I did contact uh, the radio station and said that we discussed the fact that. Uh, twenty-six percent of their budget is the Shaftesbury contribution. And we had discussed it in the meeting and we're discussing it again now. I offered them. Time to come in and I've not heard back from anybody. So I was just kind of wondering, I know it's two on. On driving to work, because I listen to VPR all the time. It's always WBTN in Bennington. As one of their transmitters, so I'm. Wondering why they don't, if they are, why they don't get money from VPR also. Um, but yeah, it's just twenty-six percent of their budget is right out of our contribution, which is I think the third highest. Community appropriation we have. At five thousand dollars. So. Uh, I haven't heard from them. I'll ping on them again. Uh, but if they don't say something at the next meeting, it'll go to print that way.
It'll, it'll go to print as what?
Five thousand.
On, 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 if they don't come in and even, even if they don't come in, it goes to five thousand? It'll stay at five thousand?
Yeah, because we don't have a, a policy. Uh, what's traditional with us is once it's approved, we just let it roll over. If you don't ask for more. So they're not asking for more. So I don't know of a way, and in reading the law, I don't see a way for us just to. Unilaterally cut it. Uh. Normally, an organization would look at it and realize it's a lot and. It's the risk of. You know, trimming it a little bit or risk getting the whole thing turned down, because it's thumbs up, thumbs down. There's, there's no middle ground.
That, that is true. The, the public has the discretion to turn it down if they think it's excess, but. I've never seen hardly a very few community appropriations. Turned down. Okay.
I guess I wanted them to offer to, you know, come in because we're talking about it and. I wanted them to have the opportunity to have a counterpoint to it. Uh, but it is, you know. This town is contributing a huge amount to their bottom line.
Okay, yeah, I, I see your point. We just can't go changing it. There's no precedence for, for us to change it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just uh, by way of information, in a normal year, it's uh, it, it's at our discretion to set that amount and we can change it. Uh, uh, if we want to or take it off the ballot if we want to. And then the um, the, the, the charity or the uh, the affiliation. Has the option of going out and petitioning to have it uh, put back on.
But, but because of that.
We're, we're not doing that this year because they don't really have that option.
Okay.
And we don't want them going out and petitioning because of COVID.
Yeah, okay then. But do you want to what? Take a motion to set the date at this time or let, or let Tony make uh. Make sure that Tony's in on the vote. Or setting the date for collect tax collections.
Um, we're gonna wait and make sure that uh, Bennington and North Bennington.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
But yeah, I'm ready to get that done at our next meeting.
Okay, let's. Let's put that on the agenda for next meeting.
And uh, I would say let's go ahead and plan on approving the budget at our next meeting as well.
Okay. Yeah. Nobody's had any concern, have they, Dave? Have they called you or anything?
No, I haven't heard. I had one phone call. I've had one comment.
All right, I still don't see anyone from the public for any more public comments, so we'll move on to other business if there is nothing else on the budget.
Hey, Tim. I, I, I did want to ask Dave about the, the skating rink. Is that gonna happen this year or no?
No, uh, the survey we put out, Joe. Uh, got a return rate of about two percent. Uh, and those two percent was split. So it was like flipping a coin. Uh, and so many people didn't respond at all. I sent out eighty-nine to your neighborhood, that mall area. And I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was like twelve came back and they were split. So the, the rec committee were taking it up to rethink the whole thing. Because we can't just put it in there when no one's commenting on it, because it's gonna be a change to the neighborhood. So. I don't know, we're, we're thinking up Plan B and C right now.
Well, I guess when you don't have it, then you'll find out how many people wanted it.
Yeah, yeah, and we tried to, because when it was first discussed, you know, it was like, well, it was there, but it's been a long time since it was there. And I said, you really need to talk to the neighbors to see if they want it, in the neighborhood if they want it, because it could generate car traffic and everything else. And then nobody responded to the survey, so. We had no valid input to move forward. Or reject it. So maybe next year.
All right, well, like I said, we'll find out, you know, by not having it, if it really means something, people will say something.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, we'll move on to other business. Uh, the item I mentioned that we wanted to uh. Take care of is uh, appointing. Ken Harrington and Cindy Morris. As representatives to Bennington County Regional Commission.
Don't move.
Move by Art. Joe, you want to second that? Ken seems shy.
I can.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, uh, by a vote of four zero zero, Ken. And Cindy are reappointed to Bennington County Regional Commission.
Thanks for doing that, Ken.
Yeah.
Dave, do you have other business?
Sorry.
Do you have other business?
Nope, that's it.
Does anyone have other business?
Yeah, I do. Yeah, um. But. A, a little, probably over a year ago, uh, Tim and I went through a tour of Stanley Tool and they took us. Into the old uh, stone part of the building, which was kind of. Was hopefully gonna set up as a museum and there was a lot of. Things in there that weren't worth very much like uh. Typewriters and things like that, that they thought they would save for the museum, but. One thing that was in there was this huge machine that is like one of a kind. In the whole United States that actually stamped. All the numbers and stuff in the squares and it was specially built for um. For Eagle Square. And uh, it, that part of the building is, is dilapidating, the roof leaks and. I know the uh, historical society is supposed to be taking care of it, but I don't see them doing anything. And I guess I would like to have the town crew. When it's appropriate to get it out of there. And so we can store it someplace and not have it completely rusted into a pile of rust. It, it is unique. Uh. And that's, I, I, I just don't see the humane society stepping up. And doing anything positive now. Just want to get everybody's opinion. Probably weighs a couple of tons, if not more. It's not. So it's probably about as, about as big as a, as a good-sized dinner table.
I know the machine you're talking about.
Yep.
I say it's worth preserving, absolutely.
Yep.
Do we have someplace to put it?
Got a pretty good-sized garage. I, I talked to. I talked to Mike Ianani just to make sure I wasn't gonna blindside him and he says, I'll, I'll find a place for it.
In the, in the town garage?
Well. He just, his comment was, I'll find a place for it. If you want to, if you want us to move it. We'll move it and I'll find a place for it. I'm sure we can come up with something.
Yeah, they could probably block it and tar it at least. Art, who owns it?
Good question.
That's a good question. I presume Bernstein owns it.
Well, I don't know.
I think they were um. Uh, the, when we spoke to the plant manager, he seemed to indicate that, you know, anything in that old building was. Um, the historical societies to be had.
Yes.
I think, I, I suspect they own, they own it.
Well. His, his comment was, I gave them a piece of tape. And told them to put, mark everything with a piece of tape that they wanted saved for themselves. I was go, I junked the rest of it. And. His comment was, I gave him too much tape. And so there are a lot of things in there that just have no historical value. I mean, they're just old. Tech uh. Typewriters and things like that, so. I don't see any point in crying over them, but that, that machine is unique. And, and possibly, you know, with, with this. The fact that it's up for sale, I think we better get it out there before it is sold if we have Bernstein's blessings, and I think we do.
How much do they want for it? How much is the buil, building selling for?
It's listed at four million dollars. They bought it for two. I think, is that right, Tim?
I re, I remember that it's selling for four. I don't remember what they bought it for.
I, somebody made the comment, it was, it was uh, two million. Number two million came up at one point. I don't know what it is. I assumed that it was for what they bought it for.
Well, if uh, we think it's possible to uh, get that out and put it. Somewhere in the, in the town garage, I think it's worth uh. Trying to save it. I was saying to Art today, uh, in terms of the, the larger. Historical value of that site, I think the, the, the old building. Is um, beyond hope, in my opinion, and I think the, the right way to start thinking about that is. Uh, not as preserving a building, but as creating a memorial. Uh, a commemorative of some type, maybe uh. Uh, preserving some of the old stones or something like that uh. Uh, of the building, but of course, that would be a, a thing to be worked out with any new. New owner. But uh, as Jim Sullivan, BRC was pointing out, the, the, the old building is really. Uh, a traffic hazard. It sets right on the road and uh, makes for a completely blind curve there. And uh, you know, if you are uh, on a bicycle or. Uh, even worse, trying to run along there, it's uh. It's, it's dangerous. Well, I will take an action item too, if you'd like to uh, contact the plant manager there. See if he's amenable to us getting in there to getting that out and I will talk to uh, the historical society. And let them know that that's uh, that's our thought.
That, that would be excellent.
Okay. Any other business? Okay, action items that I saw were, uh, Melanie's gonna check on the tax date to make sure that if we change it to the tenth. Of November, that is still the date that would in fact align with Bennington and North Bennington. Uh, Dave is going to look into a grant to uh, help bring the town into E nine-one-one compliance. And I will uh, talk to. Bernstein and the historical society about preserving that uh, that machine. Over there in. In the old Stanley Tool Building.
Tim, did we get to hear anything more on that uh, bet for that uh, tractor mower?
Uh.
No.
No, Dave?
No.
No, we haven't heard any more about that.
It was due in December, Ken, but I don't know.
Yeah, well, no, I hadn't heard anything, so I just thought I'd check.
Nope, they haven't told us yet. I did talk to them, I think I mentioned to you in the beginning in December, that they wanted a little information.
Yeah.
All sounded good, but uh, haven't heard since.
No, that was the last I'd heard about it. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, then uh, we're looking for an executive, uh, for a, a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue. So. Move by Ken, seconded by Art. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any. Aye, any opposed? All right, we will now move into executive session. Cat TV, we will give you a a, a minute to log off. Melanie, if you're still there and can hear us, you could log off, please.